Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lincoln Board of Education meeting. It is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. We are calling the board at 6:31 PM. We invite you to join us for the fudge.
I think we just shoot the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice are all.
And item three is presence to speak. If there's anybody online who would like to do so, please raise your hand. You'll identify yourself by name and. Yes, sorry. Um. And we don't have anyone in the room at the time, just for the record. Anybody online like to make a comment?
Ralph is tuned up.
Mr. Chulis, we see you. Let's get July up here.
Yeah, I hope you can hear me.
You got you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Um. I like to make a couple of comments concerning enrollment and the enrollment study. Um, in looking at the October 14th minutes, I see we have an enrollment of 375 students. When I go back and look at the enrollment study that was done for the previous building committee, the projection for 25, I think it was around 405 students. Uh, I'm not sure with the years that are in that table, uh, refer to 25, 26 or 24, 25 school year. But just going with the 2025, I believe it was 405. Now, um, if the SBC and the Board of Ed expect to garner some enthusiasm and support by the taxpayers, we have to have credible numbers. And my concern is these are all, this is all public information. People will find this. If you have a disparity of 40 students in your enrollment study, it brings into question the veracity of the ed spec. That's at least two classrooms difference. Um, I hope that there can be some plausible, understandable and justifiable reason for this difference of 40 students. Um, the other question I would have is with the 375 students, how many of those are actually in the building and how many are outplaced? Um, another consideration. And lastly, should the enrollment study, uh, I appreciate your situation. You have a very tight timeframe. Uh, does the enrollment study being done by Phil uh, and the Board of Ed really be under the auspices of the school building committee? And not so much those with a vested interest. Uh, those are my comments. Uh, feel free to respond as this meeting progresses. Um, but you have to be able to sell this to the public, to the taxpayers. And if you do not with a disparity of 40 students, you're gonna have a tough job. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chulis. Um, we do have an updated NESTA enrollment projection report that I believe was discussed at our uh, regular meeting this month. Yes, and also we will be having Peter Crowder read you his enrollment study as well. So when those things are done and those results are, we'll be sharing them with the public. That should give us some more accurate, updated information as you're asking for. And um, thank you for reminding us that um, reminding us some of the things that we need to make sure we're sharing with our public and getting people involved. So we appreciate that. Thank you. Um, anyone else online? All right, we're moving forward then. We'll have another opportunity for present to speak at the bottom of the agenda. We are here for old business. We're specifically, wow, talking about educational specifications today. So that is, in case anyone does not know, um, a list of requirements that the Board of Education has decided are necessary for a school building project, whatever that's going to be in our future here. And everything that's on there is based upon the programs we offer now. There has been some discussion about programs we would like to add and therefore space and materials and tools and furniture that would be required for those programs. Um, but we all are under the same impression that we are not shooting for the main moon and trying to make our most wonderful imagination, uh, imaginary things come true. We are trying to stick to the programs that are offered now and make spaces flexible so they can be used for a variety of purposes. Um, so we are, what do we want, where do we want to start tonight? We're gonna go over what we have so far. Is that the plan?
We can redo the update on that document.
Okay, great. We did talk recently, again, in the actual, regular actual meeting. If anybody's looking to see more of the conversation that's happened thus far. Can I make a preliminary comment or do you want me to wait till after you're done?
Yeah, that's okay.
May I? Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Um. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I've heard some people talk, like the public. I still feel like there might be a little bit confusion as to what we're doing. And I feel like a couple of meetings ago, I had said, I, I made a mention that these particular ed specs are for, like you had said, any potential school project. I think it's important to highlight that we're currently going through this with a fine tooth comb to meet a certain square footage requirement because of the discussions with Tammy Nuccio in the state. If for whatever reason that gets the kibosh, is this something that we want to reevaluate? Because we currently have more square footage now between our two facilities? Do you understand what I'm trying to say? Like, I feel like some people are like, oh, um, you know what I'm saying, Phil?
Yes.
I don't know how to word it. But I just want it to be.
So are you asking that, let's say we do this now and it doesn't pass? So then we have, we're back to two schools, then we're back to a high square footage between the two schools. Are you asking if we'll revisit it?
Yeah.
Can you go to that?
Are we gonna edit it? Because then we have
Some some more room.
More room potentially to, if, if people decide we don't want to consolidate, we don't, you know, whatever, you know what I mean? I feel like it's important to note that we've been doing these adjustments, even though these particular expecs aren't necessarily just for one future in mind, like hard and set thing, because obviously that's up to the determination of the town. But it is still kind of like potentially a fluid document for the future, just for our educational system in general. But for right now, would you say that that is what our focus is on? Why we're kind of like going through this and taking some square footage from here and, and this and that and really picking and choosing?
Our job is to create in such a document, the space that we feel is required for the programs we currently offer in our district. The matter of um, square footage and space is something obviously that we are looking at carefully. As you said, with the fine tooth comb, because we know that um, space is an issue for us, especially regarding our student population.
Right.
So if we, regardless of where we go, whatever we do, like, I think we've all agreed that we need to try and do something. And of course, folks would like to take advantage of this new reimbursement rate if possible. So we are preparing a document to um, represent our programs to give to the school building committee and the whatever comes of that, architects or um, OPMs and so on after that, um, so they know what we think is required. This is not something that's already fast. Yes, it can be changed. We've already changed it a bunch of times. And then the set that was created before was also edited a bunch of times too. Um, I want us, I think we need to be careful that we don't um, focus more on space than what our students need, because I believe our job is to, like I said, represent the programming that the kids need. Um, of course, keeping a space in mind that that I think also falls under other committees and groups' responsibility as well.
Right. I think the reason for this space is um, what we would be reimbursed for.
Right.
You know, that, keeping that in mind.
Yeah, and I apologize because I walked in halfway through what um, Ralph was saying in regards to the student um, enrollment projection, but in regards to, I said that already, I'm sorry.
No.
It's been understood by us at least that the more students, and we don't know, you know what I mean? Like 10 families could move in tomorrow. I mean, who knows? It's such like a random thing. Um. But it's, it's beneficial in general to project more students because we get more square footage per student.
Yes, if our population is higher, that helps us. And if it's projected to become even higher than that, yes, it does help us.
Right.
That's one of those moving targets that makes this whole process, can make this whole process feel frustrating for people. Because there are a lot of what ifs, there are a lot of we don't knows, there's a lot of we don't know right now, but we will later. I mean, even an enrollment projection is based on as much science and statistics as possible, but it's not in stone either.
Yeah.
So we just have to kind of take as much data as we can collect and make the best decisions we can based on that.
And just to kind of reiterate, because I feel like there might be some new people who maybe haven't been following along this whole process, but maybe they are now because it's closer to voting time. Um, we are kind of screwed, for lack of a better word, that I can't think of right now, because of our population and the certain metrics that the state have come up with for square footage. And we, you know, we have a gym, we have a cafeteria, we have these things that needs a set amount that it kind of leaps less for other things. And so space is always kind of gonna be an issue for us with our population.
True, that formula does not suit us.
Yeah, so.
Which I think for me anyway, is another reason why we really need to, if possible, take advantage of the reimbursement rate, because that helps us with the overall costs and sort of balances some of that out hopefully a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, and of course, we'll take, we'll ask for the space waiver with the state and explain to them our circumstances. I think we have a pretty good argument. We have to have certain spaces, as you were just stating. Um, whether we have 300 kids or 298, I don't know, probably even around 480 somewhere that you, like, you still have to have those things. So I don't think we're asking for anything completely absurd or larger than it needs to be. I think actually this group's been very mindful of the space that we're using and how we're using it. We had a really long discussion at our last meeting about swing space or um, was it like, what is that, flex space, flex space and those places for small groups out.
Breakout.
Thank you, breakout spaces. Um, and we've also talked about steam spaces and how there's other programs we wish we could add and like how we could creatively use those spaces or move them around or take a few square feet here, move it there, do some different things. So um, I think that's great that we're able to look at those things and know it ahead of time that we need to think those over.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to um, make the meeting go on longer than necessary or be redundant. But I think because of the timing of everything, it's important to maybe have a little recap of the highlight issues that have to do with this. So thank you for giving me that time.
Of course, thank you.
I can add more to that because I think there's the discussion has been around square footage.
Mm-hmm.
Because you've already done the written ed spec portion from last time.
Right.
And the written ed spec portion from last time is, I'm gonna show you tonight, it's the full document. It's not just square footage. It's what you're looking for in classrooms, it's what you're looking for for school security, it's what you're looking for for playgrounds. That's all part of the ed spec.
Right.
You're just updating because you have a new reimbursement rate. And technically, the document, the, the numbers you're looking at would be new. But all of the things that are in the full ed spec apply to whether it's a renovation or new.
Right.
And that's what you're applying. So yes, we've spent a lot of time recently looking at just the numbers because you've done all the other work. The only thing you've added to that is a cross-country trail, and I'm gonna show you that tonight.
Yeah, and I think it's important for some parents to know that, like, these discussions pretty much directly correlate to class sizes potentially in the future. So that seems to be a hot button topic for the town. So if people are interested in that for their particular parents, children in schools or future children in schools, I mean, these are things that you want to pay attention to, so. Thank you.
I think I'll get to that some to help clarify that some. Go.
Yes.
Okay. So this is the document you have in front of you. This is the QA and M document that was uh, presented a while back, August, I think. Um, your first column EFG is, I'm not gonna say exactly, it's close to what was initially presented for the vote. Trying to match them up when it's two different vendors, Collier versus QA and M was not exactly apples to apples. But the square footage just give you a chance it's close. The proposed option one is what was given to you as your main, that was your August layout. And now based upon your feedback, feedback from your last meetings, I've made changes based upon what you said, and that's what I'm gonna go through. So anything in that column NOP is in red is a change that has been made based upon your feedback. So item number one, you said, we care more about creating an extra space, take out the breakout spaces. So if you see on the left, row 15, row 19, row 25, row 32, all of the breakout spaces are now zero. That's item one. They're all gone. Okay? Item two, you had um, you wanted separate intervention spaces, an elementary intervention space and a middle school and uh, intervention space. Um, this used to say uh, flex and now says elementary intervention. That would be ELA and math in one room sharing together. And then down here in line 75, that would be the middle school one. Okay, same thing, ELA and math sharing a space. So that's done. You talked about, I, I kind of pinned you down to say we need to know when you're rotating classes. You said we want to maintain that middle school model fifth through eighth. So that means you need a grade five, six and a grade seven, eight social studies classroom, which is two classrooms. That's your new line 31 that did say flex is now more accurately labeled as grade five and six and seven and eight social studies. It's two classrooms, 725 new square footage. Okay? The only flex room that you have currently, only over full classroom is your grade one through four flex. Everything else is accounted for, for what you currently do. Right, a social studies teacher in fifth and sixth grade right now that they teach fifth, uh, social studies and science in fifth and sixth grade, they have a classroom, it's represented here. Okay? So that is item four. If you go down, nothing changed in encore and special academics until you get to the student support services section. I reviewed this um, and I think for clarity, I didn't, and I talked to Rusty about all this too. I didn't like how the special ed spaces were presented because they didn't match what we had. The square footage did. But what, where they were, I, I thought needed to be cleaned up. And so pre-K already has two spaces, okay? So then you can compare column H, I, and J, that's what you had, and now NOP. Okay, so pre-K doesn't need another pull-out space. They have two classrooms. One grades uh, one through four, and it's really K through four is how Marsha and I are looking at it. Uh, oh, sorry, K kindergarten has a classroom too. Um. Resource one through four has three sections now, three small, and those are pull-up. That's basically what they have now. They actually have, some of them have full-sized classes, same thing through five through eight. Okay? We also cleaned up the self-contained um, classroom with toilet. Talking to Rusty, he said, you know, that bathroom takes up quite a bit of space in a room like that. It could be 80 square feet, make it a little bit bigger. We did that. So it's 450. The self-contained classroom is the one where we had all, we just said where they were. Um, because it seemed like everything was self-contained and there's not that number one. It's, it's basically one now, self-contained classroom. And it's the same number, I believe, eight across the district, special education spaces. Um, and so that was cleaned up. There was no OTPT. It was at zero. They actually had it, oops, there's online Steve, it's popping on my screen. Um, they had uh, therapy, they were considering this OTPT. And I've changed it to something else now that was missing, but OTPT is back where we expected would be. One and one, storage and um, space to do the work. The um, therapy room, and the comment is just, you just can't see it. We needed the space, we have a commit, commitment for a school-based health clinic. And when I went through with a fine-tooth comb again, I did not see a space for that. Um, and so this was 400 square feet originally. They don't need 400 square feet, it's too much. We gave them an office and enough for a, a, a space for a one-to-one to meet with the child, um, which is what our agreement is, it's 200 square feet now. And again, this is more about square footage, not where it lives. The counselor office is now also says counsel, that's the middle school counselor and the mental health specialist. We put them together, so changed that number from one to two, because there was no spot for the mental health specialist. And this is why I said I went compared. There. So that's the next one. Um, when you get down to the cafeteria, I talked to Rusty about this and, and there were, and I, I hit some rows here that are just zeros, just so you don't see, it's just confusing seeing them. Um, but I asked about storage and he said, well, basically that 1,400 square feet for the kitchen surgery is, is pretty maxed out with your equipment. I said, so storage, he said, well, how much storage do you, how do you buy a month at a time? He said, well, you need some storage beyond what's in the cafeteria. And he wanted to make sure that the freezer was clear, so there's 350 square feet that was not there before. So he's looking at really 1,750 D for the kitchen and surgery. Did it together, it includes that dry food storage in the cooler freezer. That was uh, an adjustment was, adjustment that was made.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah.
The mental health specialist, is that someone we have all the time?
Yeah.
Was that a um, was that the one that started off as a grant?
Yes.
Physician, and so we've worked that in?
To in our budget.
All the time?
It's that. I think this is the 80% year.
Okay. But is it, so we're planning on keeping that role in our operating all the time?
She has a full case load.
Okay.
All of our mental health specialists, whether it's council, school counselor, school psych, mental health specialist or our social worker. It's a team of four basically, one is more for, for special ed. Um, they all have full case loads.
Okay.
So what about the behavioral um?
ECBA.
ECBA.
They are contracted, they don't have an internal space.
So where, where would she work?
She'd come in and work with, in a special education room with the teacher.
Yeah.
Yeah, wherever their spaces.
Oh, no, 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 not ECBA, um, the person that we have from the um, behavior role.
You're talking about school method, that's the, that's the um, school-based health clinic.
Okay, yes, is your room in there?
Yes, that's what this is right here, line 73.
Okay.
And that's what we, it's, it's therapy, I, I probably changed that name to school-based health clinic.
Okay, can you remind me what that is?
School-based health clinic?
Yeah.
Um, it's another, it's an opportunity for families who are, are looking for mental health support um, that can't find it. It is offered during school hours and actually they offer summer hours too. Um, and it goes through your insurance and they don't pay anything for it. So it's additional, it's additional, if someone says, I want some mental health support for my child, I don't want it to come um, from one of your school counselors or social worker, I want it to be just them. We have a space for them, and so they do additional work for us as well.
Is that a service we currently have?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And all, all we do is provide the space and the telephone, right?
Yeah.
And otherwise, there's no cost to the town.
Yeah.
How long do we have that for?
It's been a few years now.
Oh, all right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Some parents take advantage of it because the student doesn't have to be like picked up early to travel to Lowland or wherever to go to the appointment. You know, teachers just work with the um, therapist person to like schedule a time that's good for the student and they just show me I'm down and do a thing to do.
Kind of being used pretty frequently?
Yeah.
Or, and the parents are involved too, they communicate directly with the individual, it doesn't go through the classroom teacher.
Are they only provided mental health or are they physical health also?
No.
And both.
Just mental?
Mm-hmm.
No, are other HA's, SBHC's?
Do both. Correct, they do dental too, they can do dental. We, we decided to keep it to just the mental health portion.
Yeah, it's a free service. We just have to get the space.
And they don't, and we have space, right?
There's 200.
Can you hear me? This is Tracy Anderson. They lost internet and they're trying to get it back on, if you can hear me.
Hang tight, everybody, we are having some technical difficulties, but we are getting there.
Our apologies, everyone, we had technical difficulties as we were booted from the internet, we are back. And um you're getting a new view of us upside down. But we will try to strap them by telling you these important documents instead, so you don't have to wonder what's gonna fall out of our pocket. Okay, we were discussing, I don't know, like, down here in student support services. Um, we talked about the cafeteria space that was needed for the storage and cooler freezer, I think that's where we left off.
Yeah, and then the two um, the two offices for the curriculum people. Uh, and then the one thing that I had a hard time matching up was the the toilets off of the ed spec, I know that sounds strange, like the bathrooms. Um, when I met with Rusty, he's like, no, based upon, this is, it's it's code. So I put that in here, like, K has its own set, grade one, grade two, grade three, UA hallway fixtures. The fixture account is based on code, so it's based on your numbers, alright, so.
You put them separately? Did you say that?
So, I guess what I can show you is this is the
Oh, I was looking at my paper, not on the screen, I'm sorry.
Have instead, so no, no, you're fine. So this is the original ed spec and I'll show you what I'm talking about is, sorry to making you dizzy. This is what I was comparing, okay, in the original ed spec. And when you go through it, you start matching up and you're like, okay, um, where is the bathroom? And so where is this? And started trying to add them up and just wasn't working. And he assured me, because they're here, they're all in different sections than what he had. There, he's saying, they're there. There, i- it's gonna be built out that way, but the right number, square footage wise, is there.
Okay, I see.
Um, so, the bottom line is all of the changes that you were looking for um for the ed spec, and I'm just gonna go through this really fast again, the breakout spaces are gone. Two intervention spaces, you wanted social studies labeled as two classrooms five, six and seven, eight. You have one grade one through four flex, that's your extra classroom, right, if you have three sections ever. Your support services were updated, OT and PT is there, school-based health clinic is there. Um, the spaces for the resource rooms for special ed were updated, the cafeteria, dry food storage and freezer was updated. And the curriculum um coaching office was updated. In the grand scheme of things, um, I would say, the good news is, is if you look at the the, with all those changes, there's really not a big change in um the overall square footage. And when I talked to Rusty, one thing I said was, I know when you go into the state, they are gonna, they look at an ed spec and they say, okay, they're gonna try to identify well. Um, and he said, the only spot that you're gonna see it clear is the extra classroom. But I think they'll understand that because it's your only space that you will have really pre-K to eight, that's an extra one. He said, the second spot that they may question is your special ed space, but you can justify that with your special education numbers. Uh, and I said, yeah, um, it wasn't because we currently have it a certain way now, it's um, we can justify it with our numbers. So realistically, uh, the ed spec, the way it is falling right now from a square footage perspective, is uh from his perspective and mine, is spot on based on your feedback. The question for you now, from a just from a square footed footage point of view, is there anything that you feel doesn't match what you discussed last time?
Those are numbers, when we multiplied out the number of students times the number of square feet, do we have that?
I didn't do that, that's all, and it gets surprising and stuff.
Okay. I have a question. Um, this could just be me having a brain fart, but how come we need um like, we're in here for five through eight, are the math and English classes, are those those two homerooms?
Yes, so when you see fifth grade and it says two, one of those is ELA, one of those is math.
Okay.
And then you see for fifth and sixth grade, they share a science, uh, social studies teacher, they're also a science teacher. So it's three people, so that's what that line thirty-one is.
Does that? Do those two extra social study, well, not extra, but do those two social studies classrooms and science, I guess, does that potentially leave room for in, like, having an extra homeroom class?
If you were absolutely stuck, there are always ways you can try and dial it back, right? An intervention room, it's not best practice to send somebody in to a cla- a classroom and not have the intervention room, you could do that. It's not best practice to have a social studies slash science teacher for fifths and sixth grade going into a ELA or math class, using that classroom, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
It's better to allow them to have their own space, because then you can't use that other, i- if you double book, you can't, you can't put anything else in that room, does that make sense? Just paper towels in in the other room.
Yeah, um.
But you are correct, yeah.
Yeah, I guess my question was, is if we're using the ELA and math class, because there was some concern potentially with just two well, yeah, just two of each class, I guess for the bigger sizes.
Correct.
So if we're using the ELA class as a homeroom
Mm-hmm.
and a math class as a homeroom.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't you be able to use, it's not like you're sharing a room, like, oh, we're gonna make social studies who should have
You do.
maps and stuff.
You do.
Force them into a science lab who has, you know, the table elements or whatever, you know what I mean, like, I'm just, yeah. It could potentially be an additional homeroom. Because it's still a classroom.
Correct.
Just direct, you know, specifically for that topic.
Right.
Um. Okay, so I guess, never mind, thank.
I'm going back and checking out um the feedback from our community checklist that we did back to September. Some of the things that came out um highest for things the community wanted included a lot of stuff we have here, I just, that's what I was double checking. Um, preschool space for three and four levels, we have two rooms, half day, so that's better than what we, that's twice as much we have now. Rotating classes, grade five through eight was pretty high, we talked about that last time. Outdoor education space, grass, athletic fields, those are part of exterior design, also field space for the sports. Um, small group instructional spaces outside of the classroom, that one, it kind of high. I think that's how we were, we were addressing that with the I can't say it. Thank you, I can't remember the same, I like, I guess it's because we eliminated it. Um, I think we can find a flexible way to to reach that goal in a different way. A world language class, which we have contemporary building security features, which is part of design. Um, contemporary site security features also part of design and natural light throughout the building is part of design. So I feel like we took feedback from the community based on this checklist and I think we did a good job of hitting on things that they felt was most, were most important. There are other things on this list, obviously, that we've also addressed, but those were the ones that were really like the top ten names. So, good job. Well, and of course, we're still accepting and wishing for asking for further feedback constantly about what to do.
Um, Phil, is there a five to eight intervention, is it in there?
Yes, it's not in the orange, it's in, it's in the
Students.
It's in the line seventy-five, that's the middle.
We don't have, we don't have that, yeah.
You know, numbers.
I was supposed to know, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'd like, I'm gonna share this tab. This is literally how I went through, so just like making sure that every single area that was on your original ed spec is on there somewhere. Um, it was really just the bathrooms and some of the electrical, mechanical things that I have to trust that what he did in his design here is that they would be there.
Okay. The isolation slash mental health space within the nurse area? Is that a separate thing from the mental health specialist that you added?
No, so it was in there, I actually asked Rusty about that, how that being used, and he's basically, uh, he said that I'm trying to pull it up, sorry, um. What line is that? It's down. Here it is. So this line right here, the one twenty-six, so basically you have uh the, an exam room, and then if you have a kid that's really sick uh and needs to be isolated, this came about with COVID, is they made, people were having isolation rooms, we we basically had an isolation room that we made. It was the nurse's office, they gave up their office. So this space basically becomes a secondary exam room, Phil's really sick, he's probably contagious. He's gonna stay in that room until the parent gets there, if it's, if we don't have that space and you only have the exam room, you have nowhere to put Phil and another kid coming in. So he said, he said, you could make that a little bit smaller if you wanted to, um, but it's, that's how he's bring it for me.
And then, um, we did that, but so we have a counselor, a mental health specialist and a psychologist?
Yep, the school psych is really special education related.
Okay.
They're testing, um, they provide some counseling. You have a mental health specialist, which is um, that's that brand-funded physician. So she does, she runs our attendance committees, you have a social worker. Um, and then your school counselor does all of your, your middle school transition planning, five or four, things like that.
Yeah.
And yes, they all have full case load.
So between could have a workroom, right, and there are two of those, and then they share that probably bunch?
That would be the design.
Mm-hmm.
Be Brian, something central.
Is there a um, of course, now I'm looking at like the mechanical area.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, usually I see um separate room for like sprinkler.
He said, I asked about that, he said it's built into that space.
Really?
Into your mechanical space. Yeah.
Okay.
Into the square footage, again, it's not that it's, it's built into the square footage, because I asked about that.
Yeah, usually its own little thing.
Yep.
Hmm, is there a reason why it ought to be separate?
Um, I personally don't know, but I know that it always is, I don't exactly, I can't really say like why right now. Um, but I just know from physically seeing it, that it's usually in its own little room, I'm assuming maybe for safety reasons or like it's a, it could From physically seeing it, that it's usually in its own little room, I'm assuming maybe for safety reasons or like it's a, it could. Not really, cause they're really good at labeling things, but if. Someone was poking around somewhere where they shouldn't, you know what I mean, usually it's tucked away somewhere in a corner, you know what I mean? Instead of just being in a boiler room that a custodian or someone could have access to, I mean, they might have, still have access.
It's not, I want, I just want to be clear about this, it doesn't mean they're together. He's just setting the square footage saying mechanical also includes square footage for. So on this one, we had it broken out, fire protection service, a hundred fifty square feet, this is your old document. And the mechanic was, was thirteen fifty. He's basically saying that. There's enough square footage for all of those things, it has to be there, it's built in.
Don't need much space for that stuff, but.
This document really just makes sure that it identifies the square foot. Space you need for all of your things and that's what he basically said to me was that mechanical piece also. That's the way they do it, like Q A and M, is that they include the fires part of that.
Random question, does, are, is this, um and I might be. I might be too hyper fixating on. Things that we don't know and maybe it's just built into the fluff. But um what about like an elevator, it might send a cannon for that? Is that here somewhere?
Right here. Your programming.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, there's one language for the.
Yeah. They don't have ones, you know, they only have one to leave. You have a new schedule too, so.
I'm really happy with music and art, I think that looks great.
I don't know. Um practice room, do we still?
Um when you have the toilets, like for pre K and K built into the classroom, so then you also have some toilets back here. Is that redundant or is that just talking about like the in-class toilets for like that age?
That's just the toilets for that, that age. So pre K has their own toilet and kindergarten has their own toilet per classroom.
Like they're in their own little classroom.
Yes. The, uh that's why it's pre K and K and then when I did my grid about the, the toilets, I started the grade one. It's in the comment.
Yep. Okay. Oh, I see.
Looking at music, um which room would the elements be, would you put horror music?
Yeah, what you don't see in that music education is don't forget you have a stage too.
And that's classroom.
It's considered to be a classroom during, yes.
Right.
Should we decide if we're doing a? Cafeteria?
That is what I put into, and I can show you this real quick if you wanna see what I did to this and again, sorry for making dizzy. Yeah. So this is basically what the next step will be, if you're happy with the numbers, I will make sure everything that's reflected in the numbers. Goes into this document is matched up and aligned and that the changes into the text are there. So this is what I went through the first time when we started talking about this again. Um taking out some of the old history that doesn't apply. You'll see all this, it's very clear, I have to add a couple of things when you're done, cause I think it should just say Friar Architects two thousand seventeen. I will add the history from that point on forward where um Kyler's, Colliers and Q A and M were involved. Um so that will be in there. Taking out things like where it said breakout spaces, that's not gonna be there, cause you won't have breakout spaces. Um updating enrollment based upon the projections, right, that's already green, I've already done that section. But talking about like all the site stuff doesn't change. Right, natural security features, um loading pack, all of those things, place gates. That, that's really the work that you, the, you've already done unless you wanted something very different. I added an incorrect, I spelled it wrong, that cross-country running course is in there. The building code stays the same, general building features. And basically what will happen is when, when it gets down to. Here, this is where I wrote cafeteria. And it says or comparable alternative should be considered. Um if in design, you feel like a gymatorium is better. You could do that, um and it would still be the ed spec, but it's comparable alternative should be considered.
It just basically implies that you, it's a combination, it's not a separate space for each thing, yeah.
There's no more auditorium, separate auditorium in this, it is either a gymatorium or cafeteria, right now it's written as a cafeteria. Um mainly because I think the fixtures they said are. Cleaner, easy, easier with a cafeteria than they are a gym, where you've got, if you're connected to a gym and balls are flying, things like that, it's harder. It can be done.
So the stage would be in cafeteria then?
It'll be, it'll be connected to it, yeah.
I didn't know if that created any overlap with square footage if we were doing like a cafeteria or whatever, or do we still need that thousand?
The thousand is the stage. So it's not, correct, it's not, the ca- the, it's basically your, your auditorium now is. Uh where it was eight thousand square feet separate, seven thousand square feet separate, it's now the size of the cafeteria plus the stage. So it's like twenty four hundred square feet or something like that, what's the cafeteria, anybody have it right, twenty six hundred plus the thousand, the thousand is the stage. You need the space to the stage.
Um. Just the, I know in Ashford, they have the cafeteria. But when they do like choral and music band things.
By.
In the gym, uh the door opens up to like the music room, they have like a big stairs, clarinet girl. Back in the day, remember those band concerts? So I was just trying to think of like, it seems pretty creative on. You know, having multiple areas kind of be the same thing, but that would never be a stage.
It's, you're maximizing your space the way it's in right now.
Yeah.
It will be used, I mean, it's, the stage is used all the time right now.
Right.
It's a practice space for us.
Now, when we get to the design phase, or when they get to the design phase, um. Might not be a bad idea to have it in line with the, all three lined up together. So that if you needed a really large thing, you could also, with the gym, they have.
That would be, yeah. I don't think Rusty suggested, uh was a big fan of that. It just depends on, if you do something new, it's gonna be what they design.
Yeah, it's kind of like talent, like talent had, they opened the gym into the cafeteria. You could open it all up, you're giving her a very large space. What was the problem there, the noise between the gym and the?
I think you talked about fixtures and you're putting in a very expensive wall that doesn't get. Moved quite a couple of times a year. And this didn't work, but I think that was part of what he was saying.
I think there was a.
Yeah, somebody in, John?
About dust.
Thank you.
And dirt and whatever.
I'm just thinking, if you visualize, um. All when we have a concert, you know, we pretty well fill up the gym floor with chairs.
Yep.
And would we have bleachers or, I mean, there's a lot of people sit on the bleachers too.
You have more square footage, um. Well, at your gym, but it just depends on what we're. How you're setting up.
That's not enough.
That's why it's, it's, you're not pigeonholed into one, it says cafeteria or comparable, so.
Just as long as we can have a comfortable space for.
That's the idea, yeah.
There was a discussion, I think, uh within the last school building committee group, talking about um. In regards to the auditorium, uh size wise, did they want to have it so the whole school could gather? Like all of the children and staff at the same time or smaller and the students would have to come like half and half. Um so I was gonna talk about auditorium, but that's probably something that will come up again in that committee, just talking about how they wanna gather, how they want to use like. That space for the community too. And how, how many people do we get if it comes to, do you have any idea though, or that's, okay. It's great because we have a lot of.
No, don't mind it.
Yeah, how does that perform so?
We also, the kids are seated in, in gym, like the left side bleachers are all meant for kids. They watch the performance.
Right, right.
Not necessarily in play, but they watch the performance.
And how it was split, either choral and band or two grades and two grades both, so. That's not including everybody, but you think about you being there, what it looks like.
Mm hmm.
And center, they just perform in the gym slash purpose room still, is that right on?
Sure.
And they sort of fill that, right, before everybody sits on the floor and pretty well gets filled.
Sorry, I'm just going through, these are all of the other items that have been, that match up and it just basically gives me information. And most of this stuff doesn't change. Um it's not something that you've been talking about. It's, it's, you're really been looking at the square footage, but I'll make sure all square footage matches up. It goes all the way through, the one space that, um one thing that, I'm sorry, I'm just making sure I'm not missing something here. Nope, um the one thing that you. Were talking about last time that we didn't talk about so far is storage. And I did talk with Rusty about that and he says that's just something that adds square footage. And it, it's quote unquote just money is what he said, it's, it's money. So you, there is storage built into this and if you start looking at that top one, it's like there's storage for kindergarten. Uh there's storage for pre K, there's storage grades one through four. Um you know, there's a closet for one and two and a closet for three and four. There is storage built in throughout. Um he said you could absolutely. Boost it up, but you're gonna pay for it and I'm not so sure that you're missing storage is kind of how he felt.
A question or a comment, and I don't know if this is just. Not realistic, but. I wonder if we could combine a couple of like the elective classes and the stage into a T L H. To your lecture hall. So you kind of get the best of both worlds, like you could have health in there, you could have foreign language in there. Wonder how much square footage uh tiered lecture hall is?
Into what?
All of those.
What, what are you combining?
The stage.
But if you combine the stage.
They do it in foreign language.
You won't have enough seats for a show. You'd need, you'd need three hundred and fifty seats.
Yeah, I don't know, cause you're almost at three thousand square feet, if you combine all those, you're at twenty four fifty. I don't know how many, I'm just, just.
I think, no, no, I know, I think the um size of the auditorium. Last time was actually small.
What was it?
Um, would, and it included, I, I don't think it did everyone either.
Nope.
Um it fit all, every, all the kids, but would not fit staff, I think. So it was probably around three fifty and that, it was probably like six thousand square feet for all the chairs and then a thousand for the stage, something like that.
Okay. What is that, I'm like, I don't, I can't.
No, that's it at all, I was, I was.
Sure how much square footage.
If you take out the stage comments.
Yeah.
There, I'm just processing, I'm thinking about E O's auditorium, or not auditorium, their lecture hall, that probably seats a hundred.
Wyndham Tech has a lecture hall too and that's what I was thinking of, I'm like, hmm, we had some writing classes in there.
There's probably. About eight, eight or nine good rows.
Yeah.
Turn across.
I don't know that we, um, you're stuck with that space too, with a vertical lecture hall. If you, uh if that's what you're thinking, I don't know if that's what you're thinking.
Yeah.
You're stuck with it spaced for what it could be used for.
Well, I didn't, okay, finish your thought.
Well, I'm just thinking if it was, you know, combined health, um lecture hall general, whatever. Uh and world language. You only have so much floor space to teach, to do things, move things around, because the chairs are fixed.
Yeah, but how much are you moving around with those, I mean, health, yes, but foreign language right now, they do Rosetta Stone.
You have to put computers.
And then with the tier, you know, and then even if, because people in town. You know, they don't wanna go to hall or hot, can't hear, you know what I mean, it could be added benefit to the town for a presentation or. Meetings or whatever. I'm just saying, it might be an interesting thought, instead of a grand auditorium, so like maybe we could add a little bit here and there. Have multiple classes use it. Maybe, I mean, all the ones I've seen, the chairs are bolted to the floor, but you can move them, cause I've had to do work and I'm off scaffolding and stuff. You might not need as much square footage because you're, you're up.
I'm just not sure that solves the auditorium problem though, that's, that's adding a.
Partial, yeah, so you're like all or nothing.
Well, I feel like if we, we kind of have to be, because the problem is the gathering is based for the bigger. The, the band concerts and the choral concerts and stuff.
Plays.
We need to have. We would, so we would need that space plus whatever speech you're talking about.
Yeah, well, like you said, if you take out the stage part, because it's gonna be a pain in the butt, cause we need that, that thousand for the stage anyways. But I'm just trying to think of a creative way to get a little extra if we have certain classes that. Don't need. That elected square footage all the time, if it could kind of turn into like a multi-use area. But it's also set up for other things that would benefit. Other things the town needs, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about town needs, we're trying to build something for town needs and it just popped into my mind.
How many square?
It could be a bad idea.
Current gym fill. At all. Cause that fills right up with plays and bands and, clearly we're talking about this today.
I mean, I know that we would still use our cafeteria, but for like a, a band event or a theater event, but it might be nice to also have. A lecture.
The other thing is when you're combining different subject areas, you'd have overlapping schedules, like they might need. Space at the same time during the week.
Yeah, but we talked about that with other things, I mean, how, how many? Is a health teacher have a, a block every period or whatever you call it?
Maybe not.
Have someone in there every time?
But uh like language probably would. Um, you know.
Foreign language is filled all day.
Well, it's came through eight, so.
Not foreign language.
Yeah, they have Spanish, studying in.
But the Spanish person never comes into the classroom, that's, that's not something that she doesn't have her own room. So I can better, right, right.
Which was sometimes helps the scheduling as if the Spanish can count as a special outside.
And she's with the library too.
I'm just saying, while we're talking about move the town, it might be, it might be junk, but it might be an interesting thing to think about.
And then you need space.
Yes.
That, that's so. I think it's worth.
I'm not trying to throw a wrench in the, I'm just like, hey, we haven't.
Now's the time.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just.
Thinking about, you know.
And I'm going through each of the list and, and um, health and foreign language, uh that could be a music practice room. Um. The question for, I would have for Rusty is what's, what would a typical lecture hall square footage be? And you're talking about trade off, right, because we have, right now. You have fourteen hundred and fifty square feet for those two. And what would the size of the lecture hall be, I don't know that answer. And are, is the state scene lecture, lecture halls built in pre K eights or in middle schools? I think it's worth a question to find out.
So AI really quickly says. Chat G P T says, if you want. Hundred seats is approximately a thousand to twelve hundred square feet, three hundred seats, so it's basically times ten. Three hundred seats is three thousand square feet. So like I said, if you come back, well, that was, we exited the stage.
But you got two. You combine two, you combine the health and all, you could consider combining a health and world language.
How would they consider?
Also be a flex space or breakout area.
They bring their computers.
They could bring their rum book.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, maybe you just have a card there, listen, the idea behind that is like. We have a community section in the ed spec, right? we have a community section in the ed spec, right? This would be people talked about community meetings in the auditorium, you don't, you're not gonna get that. Right? And it's much different. You know, the sound quality in a gym right now, it's not gonna be much different in the cafeteria. Right? So having a lecture hall where you could have a town meeting where you might be able to actually hear people and see people. Now's the time to look at that. And if it if you think it could duplicate space and you're not losing anything, it's worth looking at. Rusty may say it's more expensive to build doubles, you know, that was the cost of what you're what you're paying for fourteen hundred square feet. I don't know that.
Yeah.
But it's worth the question. I couldn't find that out.
Just curious.
An interesting idea.
To answer your question, it's fifty three hundred square feet.
What one?
The gym is about fifty three hundred square feet. It doesn't include the B bleachers, so.
And it all fills up sometimes.
It's a you you'd call it fifty three hundred square feet of useful space without with the bleachers pushed in.
Fifty three hundred from stage to wall?
Stage to bleachers. With the bleachers closed. Not to the backs behind you, you lose.
Ten feet quote and then or like hundred hundred fifty feet down, maybe thirty feet then uh no, that's random. Hundred fifty feet down, hundred fifty five feet down. I'm asking you. If you think about if you think about the stage.
Yeah.
Not the stage, the bleach, it's going down the basketball court. It's not, it's not baseline to baseline.
Oh, how long there?
Yeah.
You know that.
I'm thinking, I think.
Fifty fifty?
Seventy five.
That's it.
How long's the basketball court? Minus ten feet.
On each side?
Yes, but I important that. But if you're just, yeah, it's just a little bit. Three feet more.
And then who you just you're proposing about the same size as the ones we have now or?
It's just uh remember this is built off an average. You could put in gold, gold, you know, bleachers or you could just do general.
So this gym in proposition larger.
It is.
Does suit the schedule.
The seventy five will be best, yeah. Right. Ten feet those are in seventy five.
So basically what I would do. I don't know if you have any other questions. I'm kind of blending this into the your second agenda item, which is like next steps. Cause I would take, if you're happy with the numbers. I would spend a couple of days verifying all the numbers into the other documents with Rusty, and I'm saying the other document being this one. And I'd be using the numbers from this one. The Q and M one, I'd make sure that square footage is in there and everything backed up. I would show you just like I do for a contract, I show you the edits. You would see all the edits in the ed spec. And if you wanted to come back next week, you could approve it. And what I could do is get the information you really only have, I think you have one discussion point right now, which was Sam just brought up.
And if you guys think it's a crap idea, I don't care.
We should ask Rusty. I don't think.
No, I think it's.
I don't know.
I just don't wanna people to be like, oh.
Don't ah whatever, it's coming up like.
You should ask that question now because once you complete your ed spec. When you send it off, their job is going to be to meet the ed spec. And the state will say, if you submit a project, did the board of ed approve the the project and it doesn't meet the ed spec? They're gonna ask that question. And you could also frame it, Sam, as if you like the idea. The board would also like, you could just say to be have the consideration for a lecture hall that could house health and world language. And put a cap on the number of seats. You could do it that way as an op as an option. Again, that's all design. But that's my thought. If you come back in a week to approve this. It would be before um elections that way. The group that's worked on it has it done. And then as the SBC is developed, you and I'm using the numbers in this from in the document from the NASDAQ projections. That's what I'm using.
You know, interesting thought too, that was used for health, you could possibly combine both fifth grades at the same time or both sixth grades. It would have more seats than a regular classroom. Not that I don't know that that's best practice or not, but it would be.
Depends on the number of kids, right?
Yeah.
Can't hurt to ask.
Alright, see you anything on the twenty eighth next week?
That's what I'm thinking. Um and what I would do is that I didn't do this tonight just because I wanted to make sure I could explain these. Is I would send you the document with all the edits in it in advance. Uh and I'm hoping I'll have it in the next couple of days. If you are okay with these numbers, I'll get back into the other document to make all those edits. And then send you, you'll have access to the Google file. It will be view only. And but you'll be able to see all the edits, what what the cross arts are, what my suggestions are. And then that's what you would be able to vote on. And then I would just click accept, except accept, except the whole way through and just take all the suggestions.
That sounds good to me. I don't know if we are having to come to consensus about that.
No, I agree.
Tracy, does that sound doable for you? Sounds up.
Did you ask me?
Yeah, we can hear you, but you're quiet.
Okay, um.
Audio to this.
Yeah, that's acceptable to me.
We heard you. That's acceptable to me is what I heard. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome. So um the goal, the plan was the twenty eighth at six thirty, but we'll expect to each end front. Friend of that just.
Yeah, that's my thought. This is the twenty eighth and.
I think we're mostly good for that.
Six thirty?
Yeah.
That's what I'm aiming for again, that that's will work. And that would be your your the goal is approval. If you if you don't improve it, you listen, you gotta have another meeting before elections if you want your stamp on. But I think you really only have one question and I'll get, I should be able to get that answer tomorrow, to be honest with you. Uh Rusty and Mike have been very helpful and um they've been responding very well, so.
Alright, great. Um let's see if there's anyone available or willing, wanting to do presence to speak at this time. Presence to speak.
Can you click? Um yeah, you're gonna have to allow unmute. My view is horrible.
Okay, fine.
Okay, I got it. You got it. Here's uh, wish you all a show. Yeah.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, everybody. Um I just wanted to congratulate you on the amount of hard work this is. I know firsthand how difficult the decisions are that you faced. Um I was glad to see that there were some flex classrooms added in. I would have really liked to see at least an additional flex classroom. I'm sorry, additional flex space and an extra classroom um than what was in here. Um and I'm glad you're thinking creatively about how you might be able to uh, you know, uh combine some spaces and use spaces for multiple purposes. Um but um please remember that it's important to get both the most cost effective building we can, but we don't want to um cut off our nose in spite of our face and go for the absolute cheapest building we could possibly build. Um if there's a focus of what we need, it needs to be first on student learning and what would promote the best possible environment for students and staff. I think you've really done a good job with that. Um would I have liked to see more? Sure. Um but I know you're you're uh you know, uh trying to make some difficult decisions, so. Um as long as you're keeping students' needs at the fore, I think that's what's most important here. So thank you all for your time uh volunteering on this. Um I know this is above and beyond your regular work and uh I appreciate the fact that you had a special meeting.
Thanks, Michelle. Uh we get Mike next.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. McCoo, are you there? You're good.
Hi, at first it would not let me unmute.
Alright.
Um okay, the camera, I'm not allowed to turn my camera on, but it's Mike McCoo from Clover Springs. I just wanted to comment on some things were said earlier. I thought the chair's comment was very important about the fact that the ed spec has to first be based on the programmatic decisions of the board of ed and the input from the stakeholders. And um then certainly can be aligned and should take into consideration the square footage that those programs use up. Um and also I think that leads into the creativity of the final design. And you have hit on a lot of it in your discussion today. What spaces work together as co-users or what programs work together as co-users of spaces, spaces, I should say. And um what kind of creativity can be put in the building? So as to get the most out of the square footage, but again, with the first priority being what are the reasonable programs to get in? Obviously, we won't as a town, get everything we would wanna see in a building because it's just simply impractical and too expensive. Um but I do think the discussion is going the right way and I think the um clarification that was made earlier also about the fact that the um study, enrollment study is um going to be backed up by another take with uh Dr. Prada was a good clarification and I just wanna say continue the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh Mr. Tullis is back to us.
Yes, Ralph Tullis, Village Hill Road. I just wanna clarify something I had said earlier. Actual enrollment versus uh the previous enrollment study. Um I I had stated a number of uh difference of forty and what I that number came from the four fifteen that Phil had mentioned in the October fourteenth meeting. The actual, the previous enrollment study was actually four oh five, so the disparity between actual and projected was thirty. So I I just wanted to clarify that regarding the uh ed spec, uh I think I misstated or or should not have said that that belongs with the SBC because maybe if I recall our work on the previous SBC, that was one of the items we were waiting for to finalize our work uh before we went to referendum and uh hopefully uh this SBC will have a better uh starting point with respect to that information. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. That is something we're trying to do is as much work as we can to provide for the school building committee and also support them as much as we can to. It's pretty clear that everyone in town is gonna have to work together if we're gonna make any moves here. Um so I think everybody at this table for sure and at home, hi Tracy, um has that course of course, so thank you. Anyone else for presence to speak? Alright, um just to recap, we are planning to meet next week, October twenty eighth at six thirty PM to do a last look through. Um be right side up and hopefully improve some ed stuff. So it's never too late to participate or send in your comments or ideas. Please um encourage your friends, neighbors and so on to participate. It's so important. And then we are ready to uh adjourn. Oh goodness. Done?
Done.
Sam on the day back?
Right.
Great thing. Okay, we are adjourned at seven fifty four. Thank you.